All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our December 16, 2021 work session. Last work session of the year. I got here a little late, Stan. Um, I'd like to call a work session to order. Hey, Dan.
Hi.
Come on in. I'm gonna turn this meeting over to Dr. Matt Loos, our superintendent, to give us an update on our school education projects.
Okay. And this will become a regular agenda item for the foreseeable future. When we have, so this is more of an informational piece. We expect things to get moving shortly at Mayark Elementary School. The county commissioners approved $14.2 million fixed price for the renovation in addition at Mayark Elementary School. That went through at the December 6 meeting with all commissioners supporting that vote. We anticipate that the kindergarten building may be torn down, demolished at some point. Anticipate that occurring early January. We were hoping to move that up, but it looks like early January. The building's ready to go. We've pretty much stripped everything out of there that is necessary and get that project moving. Mayark Middle School's gonna fall after Mayark Elementary, right after we get Mayark Elementary out, Mayark Middle School will get online. They're running about a month, six weeks behind, and that's by design as our biggest need is at the elementary building. They're both in need, but the urgent need is at the elementary. The middle school is gonna run just slightly behind.
Did they get the same contractor for both projects?
We did. We did. And they'll work on them simultaneously. We couldn't run the, by separating them out, we could move things along faster than if you tied them together.
It would be the most cost-effective to have the same contractor.
It is. It is. They'll have the same contractor, different crew leaders on each side, so they're not talking back and forth. And it's a design-build project, which also reduces the time needed and should increase the quality of the product.
And we have county personnel working on this with Matt.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah. And so they're gonna work simultaneously in that regard.
Did we, you know, the labor issue's such a thing right now. I hope this doesn't cause me problems with these, this contractor, you know, shortage on workers.
Yeah, Sussex has, Sussex is the group that won the bid, and they haven't indicated that that's an issue, fortunately. They've done several other projects in the county as well, so it's been, they finished, they did the new public works building, and hopefully it continues.
The same county person, Michelle.
Michelle.
Oversaw that building.
Correct.
So.
Yep. So that's, and Matt needs that support. She needs our support. So we're gonna continue to monitor that as, there's a certain threshold where, and I know in the past we've had a project, we've actually hired people to run the project here and help with that support work. So we're gonna monitor when that new elementary comes online and what's that threshold, attempting to run 10 buildings and 10 school buildings plus all the auxiliary support buildings, and how much can Matt actually, you know, keep on implementing. We're aware of that, and we're gonna continue to have those conversations. Matt, we were talking about you earlier.
I know. We were talking about the contract.
It was good.
I worked four o'clock.
It was good. All right. It was good stuff. All right. So we assigned him much more work. All right. So modulators also, that is on the county, their agenda for Monday night. It is on the consent agenda of a budget amendment for modular purchases out. Matt and I were just discussing just a few minutes ago, like everything else, construction delays are in place, so we have got to get this bid out and get things moving. It's gonna be a real challenge to get the, everything up and in place to start the school year. We're gonna do our absolute best. Everything's moving forward with the property off of Hall Street Road for the new elementary school. We're getting closer to putting out the RFP for that project, and it'll be a rather loose project. We'll say that it'll be an elementary school for 750 students with these things involved. We're gonna have that, this amount for parking, this amount for this, and so on and so forth. We did discuss, and I don't miss crap, you had mentioned an auditorium for the northern end. At this time, the way the finance is going, that probably would push us outside of the current budget, but I think it's something to consider in the future.
And we would have room with the amount of space that we have there to be able to do it later, possibly.
There'll be enough room. That's a 36 acre property.
Yeah.
So there's opportunities there. And to that end, speaking of property, we're actively searching for more property in the county for a second, for another elementary school and possibly another middle school that we need to get moving on those property purchases as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? We're done with this. All right, our fall policy update, our second reading.
Matt, did you have anything to add?
Uh, I will say that I've been in conversations with the design-build team and the engineer at least once or twice a week. I was on the phone with the engineer today, and we're supposed to have a, our first construction meeting. We've been having design meetings for months now. Our first construction meeting is Monday, and then myself, the county engineer, and the head superintendent of the project are gonna sit down and work out fine details of how this thing's gonna start flowing and when it's gonna start. There's no official date for demolition, but I think they're just waiting on finalization of project for minutes. So, been getting a lot of, a lot of responses and emails from vendors who want to get in on this thing. I've been having to direct them to design-build teams, so I don't get stuck in any of that a lot of it. But it's moving along now. That's it.
So we have certain dates, timeline dates?
They have a preliminary timeline right now, and it's pretty well on target.
Okay.
I have that in my email, but I haven't been watching it because things haven't started yet, but we'll start keeping track of it as soon as things really start breaking around. But I'll say that we, as the maintenance team, have both of the buildings at Mayark Elementary School ready for demolition. We pulled everything out except for the security system, and they're coming out next week to pull their equipment, so we're ready.
And what's the date in January? Do they have a specific date for that?
They don't. They may actually start placing fences and things like that over Christmas break, but everything's kinda stagnant.
Breaking ground date?
Yeah. It's the holiday season.
Right.
Yeah.
Did you share that timeline with us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think what's the, the holdup right now is the demo permit, so despite the fact that, and this is a learning lesson for me as well, is that even though it's county property and school property and so on, we still have to follow the same permit process, the same, the same processes are in place, just even though it's almost an internal.
Any other stuff to say or add?
I sent in the report. The only thing that was in there was a, a pink coating on the bottom of a sink that's in one of the, it's been on the watch of this for 30 years. They said that's no concern. I looked at the plastic bag and we can handle it. Yeah. So other than that, it's all ready to go.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Fall policy update. Okay, we're on our second reading of our policies, and the first one was 1310, parental involvement. There were no questions regarding that previous one. School safety. We did make a language change here from feedback from the board. We removed implement and place consider in the COVID-19 strategy component. 1720, this is the title line, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. There was a question from the board regarding the age of consent in Virginia. The age is?
Age is 18.
Age is 18, not 16.
Thank you for taking on that.
I don't believe we had any questions here. Sandy, did you wanna add anything here? Personnel, student records, electronic transmission. I think, we didn't have any questions. I think we were in good shape on the policy.
Yes.
Okay. Remote participation in board meetings. This is just a procedural item. We've covered that. The technology responsible use. We removed chatroom and added guest. We removed the title chatroom, we added guest for guest network. Testing and assessment. We are okay with this language. This is gonna speak to the reading program that the state's put forth. We really can't work around that. Student promotion and accountability. This also speaks to letters training that will be coming. We were able to push our letters training off until next year rather than, we were able to move to the third cohort rather than the second cohort, and we'll have that discussion in the spring regarding, it will affect our school calendar next year, the amount of training that must go on from our staff. That's the discussion for early spring. The graduation requirements. Ms. Jones, the paperwork we put together before, we sent to Bobby Hanning, Bob Steinberg. I'm gonna resend that after Christmas and just give a reminder, continue to push the narrative around an adjustment to the graduation requirements and bring that back up. Children military families, we were okay with this language, just find procedural changes. domicile and residence requirements, this is required. Again, speaks to military families. Unsafe school choice transfer, this is, we were okay with this language, it's also not something that fortunately applies to us currently. Hopefully never. Student behavior policies. So the question came up, or this speaks to the universal language and so on. So when we were discussing internally in cabinet, this also aligns with our strategic plan regarding a aligned policy and procedures. And so this is one that we have on our schedule 2223. That work doesn't magically start then, but it actually starts now, works to the summer, and we, this is in our, on our plan to move forward on and to make sure that we do get aligned policies and procedures across our buildings. To the largest extent possible. Student dress code. This speaks to the nondiscriminatory dress code, and we can't apply a dress code that applies only to females but not to males, or only to males and not to females. Attendance, we were fine with those changes that were put forth. Clarified student records. This was required. Some terminology. Student surveys. There were no questions regarding student surveys. Visitors to school. Many of this applied to the COVID-19 guidelines, not much of which are struck. Registered sex offenders. All of our lobby guards are currently working, and that is one of our stop gaps to prevent a registered sex offender from ever entering the building. Again, further clarification. And Matt, also, any offender we bring in has to register.
All the moving into the county, is anyone responsible to do searches on this to make sure nobody's, I mean, I know that sex offenders are not supposed to move within so many proximity of schools, but do we ever, or is that something the sheriff's department does, to do checks to make sure that if they're coming up with all these new, you know?
I know it's not something we do.
We don't, but the sheriff's office does.
Maybe they do.
They're required to register in there in the national database. I have not run into that in here nor in my previous districts. We were notified when an offender would move within a certain radius.
There's just so much movement in and out, you know, of current actions.
We actually, I'm not supposed to speak, but we signed up, most of the elementary principals a year ago, I think, two years ago, signed up for this registry, and it alerts you whenever there's someone who moves into the area.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thanks for talking.
Is that all of our?
But that's not moving like in a certain radius of the school, like it's just in a, in the D.C.
It's so long that are within.
They don't tell us the mileage distance.
But is that everybody? Does all, do all our principals do that?
I do.
I know. We all do.
We were just talking to the three of you, you know.
Okay.
It'd be a good thing for all of us.
I think that was the topic of conversation maybe a couple of years ago.
It was. I actually forgot.
Well, we can't remember the website. It just automatically comes to us in the email.
Thank you. Thank you for that. If you're the sheriff's office, I think they share it with us.
All right. Any questions from entered policies? We split, there's so many that were sent to us that we split. We're gonna go for the first reading.
Okay, the second reading, we will vote on those tonight.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
The first reading for the second group, so we split these. Those were some pretty heavy ones in there. We had a lot of good discussion on that first group, so we're gonna go through the second group right now. 5210, it speaks to, and it's required, but it speaks to distribution of non-school materials. And Renee and I were discussing this and how this generally works, especially more of a secondary level piece. In other words, things have to be approved before you put them up. That doesn't mean that people always get them approved. They're supposed to be approved. Safety and transportation, this speaks to, so we looked at this one as well. The Centers for Disease Control requires mask wearing on school buses, and so that language of implement or consider does not apply. That's why we not apply that same request to this, because it's CDC language, that's not the same as the state.
So is this required? I mean, do we have, do we have to implement this policy?
You mean, a school bus is not, I think that's a federal.
It's a temporary requirement for students. So this is a temporary, this is gonna get, when we stop wearing masks, this is gonna come out.
Okay.
So this is temporary language that supports the current guidelines that we're working under, but we can't work around the CDC guidelines of mask wearing on buses.
So this is a temporary policy?
Yes.
Do we have language in there to say that this is temporary?
Yes.
It does have to say.
I have to talk.
That's us though. But even if we go to no masks, we still have to do mask on the bus.
Correct.
Right, because it's a federal law.
Despite the reports. Yep.
What, even no mask, what, mask optional?
Oh, right, mask optional.
Masks are like tax hikes, which will be temporary. Use of student transportation services.
I just have a question here. On the second page, students suspended from riding the bus are not allowed to ride the ferry with a parent or guardian during their suspension without prior permission from the principal? How can we enforce? I mean.
I think that's.
How would we, I mean, like if they stay in the vehicle with the parent, I don't see how.
It's always been, yeah, that's something new.
I think DOT coverage does. We have something to do with that.
That's amazing. I would assume they.
But it does, it does say without prior permission from the principal. So the principal would probably allow it with the parent.
Yes.
If it was.
I bet you if we were challenged on that, it wouldn't be able to.
That was the OT though, that made that rule.
Wow.
Well, it's involved. Is there a reason why it's?
Probably because the parent drove the child down the fair and put them on the fair.
Right.
Right.
That would be my guess.
Yeah, I would think so, but I just, I'm surprised. I just assumed we wouldn't be, have any.
Well, it makes sense, like if they're suspended from the bus, you can't take them and just drop them.
Oh, yeah, I would've think that, but.
But the part, a part about not being able to sit in a car with the parent.
Yeah.
That, that part of it is.
Well, that's what it says though. With a parent.
Yeah. But there's like, the principal would override that.
Yeah.
But I would think so.
Okay. Sorry.
Well, I think that, I'm gonna speak up. I think the issue was, even if you had to add the with the parent part, I would think, would be because kids that were suspended were getting in a vehicle with their friend.
Right.
And still you have the same problem.
Oh, yeah.
That they were on. So then they, you know, they wanted to make sure that, that we wanna step farther, if you will, and make sure the parent still has the permission. Because if they're suspended on a bus and they're on the day, they're right over there. We don't assume there wouldn't be a law.
They carve up there.
Yeah. Use of student transportation services, just a small language change. It's recommend, we do look at each one, even recommended, we're not gonna bring that forth just to have a policy, but this is just a language change on the backside of it. Transportation service and vehicle contracts. We have always done this. This is not a change for us. We make sure that we have approved vendors.
Rarely do we even use that.
Correct. They just come up with lengthy events out of state or across the state. 7100 was recruitment and selection of personnel. Again, it's strongly recommended, and it goes back to Vosdok versus Clayton County, which you'll see throughout much of the changes. It speaks to pregnancy, childbirth, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Licensor, these are both required. Communicable diseases in employees. The changes were in red. We have a process and procedure in place with communicable diseases. It speaks to principals reporting to the health department. Our principals do not report to the health department. We use Virginia's student services role to work with our health department. It streamlines the process rather than having 10 different people communicate with the health department.
So do we need to address that in the wording?
It has, this has been our wording for a number of years, but the general statute speaks to principals, and principals are required to report suspected cases. They are reporting, but we streamline the process by following it to Virginia to provide that conduit versus multiple ways to reach out. We, they, we have, our process uses that. We would survive, we would be okay with the general statute as it reads, but I, you know, with our principals, any good judgment?
Should we add principals slash administration? Just to, I mean, it does say report, they're required to report it to the county health director. I wouldn't want it to be held against our principals. I know it's being reported. That's not what I'm saying.
I think when it, well, I guess we could, I think some of this came into play when it originally spoke to HIV and AIDS. I think this policy comes from there, and I think during the past two years, we've kind of modified some things. I mean, it does speak to the principal reporting directly to the health department, and I'm okay with that. John, have you ever reported directly to the health department?
Not since I was younger.
Denise, even, I'm just, I'm just wondering how long we have, this has been, but we do come across policy where the wording doesn't match.
And I don't think there would be negligence in our end as long as it was reported from the principal to someone who then perhaps was that funnel of the conduit. I don't think that there would be any issue of negligence there.
It's the lack of reporting that's gonna get you in trouble.
I'm just, I'm just looking out for the principals, you know, if someone were to say, well, you didn't do this, you know, but whatever you, you think.
We did catch that, but we fortunately.
I know it's being reported. We're not negligent as a system.
I think if general statute says principals, then no matter what we do in our wording of our word policy, if the general statute says principals, then that's, you know what I mean? Like really.
And I know in the past, like, as a teacher, you told the principal, and then the principal went to the next, the next in line.
Can we add something to our policy to say that, you know?
We can look into that.
Virginia is, you know, that position is going to assist with it.
We'll check that. Again, policy is generally created because someone didn't do something.
Yeah.
And that would be moved before you back into this further and get some different proponents. So we'll check in if we can add that. Employee dress and appearance, this is largely tied in with the student dress code in terms of employee. The same employee dress code must apply to male, female. You can't have one without the other. And it must be gender neutral. Again, this speaks to that case again with Vosdok and Clayton County. There has been a change in our leave policy with personal, personal days. Who's that said?
Right here.
Right here. Sorry.
There was a bill that passed in November that said, so long as the teacher gave a reason for taking a personal leave day that we could not dock them, be $50 docked anymore. So also, in addition to that, it's still in place, the five-day rule, so if you give, leave in advance of five days, you do not have to give a reason, and it's automatically approved. So that's where we are with that.
And if you request it less than five days, it's up to the principal.
Well, yes, and you have to give a reason.
And you have to give a reason, but no reason and automatically approved if it's five days or more.
Yes.
And information went out to your bookkeepers today, and staff, I believe, is aware of that as well.
Also, congratulations, you're in your new position, Susan.
Yes. Can you say anything?
Now you have to take one. Military leave was required, and so was the other, the personnel leave that Susan spoke to, but that's, that's a good change.
Yeah.
I don't know why, the North Carolina teacher, who already is underpaid, would have to pay more to take a day off. Personnel files, this speaks to directors. So we have been getting, schools across the state, including us, are getting inundated with public records requests. They seem to come in flurries, often from vendors seeking information from employees. This speaks to employee directories. We don't have one. So that, we don't have a directory to give out or to share. It was optional, so we were fine adopting this because we don't, we don't plan on having one in the future either, where everything is in a one-stop shop. I don't wanna give, we don't wanna ever accidentally give our information out. That's not gonna occur. Federal grant administration. Susan, will you touch on this as well?
So with our federal grants, that's something that I have been working with the directors on, and will probably be working with them a little more closely, because the federal procurement rules have become a real bear over the last two to three years, and they've changed them on us, and every time they change them, they get more intensive. So I'm gonna be working with them to make sure that everything is in place, that when we get reviewed by fiscal monitoring, that everything is above board and in place like it should be. We have some things already documented, but I think there's probably two more things we need to get in place. We've already had some districts around us that have been reviewed, so I've been talking with them, trying to find out what they got popped on so that we don't get popped on. what they got popped on so that we don't get popped on.
With the S R funding that we've received and so on, it's going to be imperative that we keep a tight watch on the federal grants. Annual independent audit. It adds a requirement. It's in red there. If required, the board will submit a response to the auditor's findings, recommendation of fiscal matter within sixty days of the presentation. We would have done that. That is standard procedure. However, it was not in the policy before. Again, legally, some people probably didn't reply in a timely manner. We were okay with that in that one. It's good fiscal practice. And planning to address facility needs. A little bit of irony in this one. It removes a state requiring all professional contracts to be approved by the board. However, we already have. We have a fifty thousand dollar threshold. We're all familiar. We've had multiple discussions regarding the contracts and so on. It also speaks to adopting a formal, long-range plan and what that process is. We have a plan. We started off this meeting discussing where we're headed with our projects. And we are using that 10-year study as a guide for our roofs and some of our larger projects. So when we are making improvements, we know where to go.
Is this required, this change of wording, to mark that out?
It is recommended. If the statement was removed in order to make the policy consistent with sixty-four twenty, contracts with the board, which gives the superintendent the authority to approve contracts up to a certain dollar amount. So by taking that out, it just makes this policy consistent with our current policy.
Sure, we have a longer work session to come up with our five-year capital outlet plan. And also, you know, facility, the session needs, just, I'm talking a work session only for that.
We work out in the January meeting. A little bit, we should have a tighter timeline with the building projects at that point. That'll help inform some of the other decision maker.
But this doesn't obtain to our building projects like with any of the fifty thousand above. We don't get involved in those approvals for the expansion of the schools and the new build.
That's correct. So this is where we can have. It'll be, it'll be a good discussion. We'll walk through that.
Okay.
Pretty closely because we're limited in what revenues we have to address what needs we have in our buildings and facilities. We do a nice job of keeping things up and I would talk about that before, much like our houses, roofs are first. And then your plumbing and so on and so forth. And so we, we keep those up and we have, we have 10 buildings. We're soon adding 11th and a lot of square footage. Also, at the January meeting, do we have a closed session to discuss the acquisition of property? Because we're going to be looking for new property?
We can. We can add that. I'm just going to add that to our January meeting. If, in the meantime, I know we're right here at Christmas, but after, after the holidays, if anybody knows any property that's not currently on the market that would suit our needs, let's kind of be able to look out prior to that meeting. And if you, if someone contacts you and tells you that they have a decent property and it may be something we're interested in, we need to really try to identify, one, maybe two, and go ahead and move forward on those purchases for the land because it's being developed like crazy and we're not going to be able to find it four, five years down the road. It's just not going to be available. And if it is, you're going to pay even a larger premium on the property than possibly now. So just, just be able to look out if anybody hears anything or knows of any land.
I'll talk to the planning department as well for some of the plots that are open and see if they can direct us.
Yeah, we had, what, those, that meeting that we had, I guess, like three or four years ago that were nine, seven, seven or nine. But that was all in the Moayok area. And we didn't need.
Soil that was suitable.
Soil, but we ended up with one of those.
Well, the Moayok soil that's suitable is a joke.
Well, we have had a couple of people reach out already that have property that they're interested in. It's just a matter of, is it the location?
Right.
Is it where we want it?
Okay.
It's not if we need it, it's if we need it.
Okay, that sounds good. But go ahead and, attendance, we put that closed session meeting on your calendar. And the time will be determined. Okay, any questions?
I just want to say thank you to all the principals and assistant principals and all of y'all for the amazing job you're doing. And I want you to take this time to rest and enjoy your family and Merry Christmas.
I as well. I know there's been so much going on in all the schools. It's exciting. Looking at all the pictures. I appreciate everyone putting it on there. I try to look at every single one and it is, Merry Christmas and I hope everyone has a nice holiday. But I really appreciate, there's just so much. When you walk in the schools, your kids are excited. They're just, you know, having a good time and that is especially, and they're the little ones, you know, that, this is the time they should be in. So I will thank you all for the extra effort. It seems like everyone's really going above and beyond this year because the last, you know, couple were kind of shaky. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
I agree with that. And, you know, we give the shout-outs at the end of the board meeting over at the courthouse and our principals aren't always there to hear it. But I think every meeting, we recognize your schools and all that you're doing and how beneficial these things are to our students and hats off to the faculty members and the volunteers that go out of their way to plan these festivals and bingo nights and the dances and you know, I know it's extra hours, but the kids benefit. So thank you all. And I agree. Take the next couple of weeks and turn the computer off and.
Or at least if you're going to have a computer on, be doing something fun.
Merry Christmas.
Well, I was an elementary principal and high school principal and I didn't have to go through near what you're going through now. And I, I don't know, you just go the extra mile in doing the job, helping the kids. That I really appreciate.
Yeah. I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. You go above and beyond. You keep going. You don't give up. You make it look effortlessly. And it doesn't go unnoticed. We, we're paying attention when we go in the schools and we see the, we see the different activities and the function there. You know, maybe some are doubling.
Amazing thing about the docks that they look so small.
Yeah.
Calm and serene, but underneath they're all like this.
That's right. So we appreciate it and we hope you have a wonderful Christmas with your family and friends and loved ones and hold them close. All right, with that being said, I'd like to adjourn the work session. Thank you so much.